I think, uh, if we're gonna get done at, uh, before midnight. I think we're only scheduled till 11:00 PM tonight, so, uh, we should probably...
Do you pronounce Long's last name?
I think we're good with wire in the back.
Long's last name.
Thea.
Thea.
Okay. Okay, it is Tuesday.
Wait.
Oh, wait for my beeps. It's Tuesday, 3 September. It is now 7:07 PM, and, uh, this meeting of the regular Board of Trustees, Village North Hudson, will be called to order. Uh, let's see. Lord, you are the rock and strength of this nation. You are the only one who can deliver us from our enemies. We trust you, in you, and pray humbly for your guidance and direction for this great nation. Give us wisdom to make the right choices, help us to live in such a way that your name will be honored in all things, may you forever be praised. Uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Head.
Here.
Klein, absent. O'Brien, Berglund.
Here.
Rhodey, absent. Standifer.
Here.
President Wecken.
Here.
Trustee Zappa.
Here.
Okay. Item number three, comments from the floor. This is an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, and opportunities not on tonight's agenda. Does anyone... Terry.
President, I think we missed number two.
What?
Missed number two.
Oh.
You can move them out.
Well, no, we'll get them after that.
Okay.
I'm checking them off too fast.
Um, do you want me to state who I am?
Uh, please, and the address, name and address, please.
Terry Ritchie, 306 Lakeview Drive North.
Thank you.
Um, I have one question for the board. Um, I want to know what department is responsible in monitoring the vision triangle in the village when it comes to an intersection.
Just, just one quick response before any of the board members respond. Um, since it's not on the agenda, the board couldn't take any action or really get into any detailed discussion about this, but it would be Public Works.
Okay. My concern is, um, on Lakeview Drive, coming out of Lakeview Drive, heading north, um, being able to see right, left, crossing on the Pine Street. Between my car and my motorcycle, I have to pull out toward the middle of the street because of the brush on both sides. I would think that this would've been taken care of before school started, 'cause there are some children that do live down on Lakeview Drive. So I'm kinda disappointed in that issue. Two, I understand that Public Works is looking at reservicing Lakeview Drive for a temporary fix until as time goes on, be able to have the funding to totally repair in the ground, et cetera. Personally, I think that's a waste of money to try and cover, seal it, cover code it for now. I'd rather deal with it as it is until you get the money to do it right. It's like, as a taxpayer and living on that street, I don't agree on the decision that they're looking at doing.
Thank you, Terry. Since we can't make any discussions or whatever...
No, but you can certainly refer it to Public Works if you want to, have them look into it.
Public Works is here, so Mark, you can take a note.
Basically, uh, as far as the vision triangle is on the list that we were... The police department alone made a list. Uh, I think the largest part is, like, when you sat in 12, it's hard to see it. Seven, 12, and then, um...
The reason for what's going on, maybe it was in your...
Oh, I understand. I don't, we don't wanna open up another can of worms, I understand. But just the whole, it's just a safety issue. I mean, the hell with whatever's going on, we gotta look at the safety issue, too, as far as anyone coming off that street. You gotta wave.
Oh, thank you, Terry. Okay, now we gotta backtrack, review and approve the minutes from the regular board meeting. Uh, let's see, is there any additions and/or corrections?
I'll move to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of August 6, 2013.
Thank you, Colleen. Thank you, Mark. Uh, any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes as posted? Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Okay, number four, new business from the board or staff, uh, president's comments. Uh, the only comment that I will make is, is Terry, Clint already started it out with, uh, "School is now in session," as anybody that has children knows for sure, and, you know, they were all out and moving today. I would just encourage everyone to please pay close attention to the little darlings as they are prone to dart out in front of people without thinking too much, and please pay attention to the school buses. There's always somebody that's in such a big hurry that they try to go around the school buses if those lights are on. Uh, I know Mark and his staff will be more than happy to make sure that you will be fined accordingly for not paying attention and giving the right of way to the school buses. Uh, administrator comments. Gloria.
Um, two things. The first is that you'll see a budget packet in front of you as we briefly talked about it at, uh, Finance. Um, I just would like you to take that with you for the, for review, um, so that you know where we're sitting year-to-date, and you will notice that there's a, um, projected year-end amount that shows that we will be over budget. Um, that is due to the storm damage, and, um, we will be addressing that within the next month or so. And the second thing is, um, I'm gonna defer this to Colleen. Um, it's in regards to the shelter at Summers Landing Park.
Um, yeah. Did you wanna stand up, Mike, so we know who you are? Um, on behalf of the North Hudson Park Board and the North Hudson Village Board, I'd like to recognize the following volunteers from Faith Community Church who donated their time to construct the picnic shelter at Summers Landing Park. Doug Buggney of Hudson, Mike Kruger of North Hudson, Ron Moska of North Hudson, Gary Norris of Woodbury, Garrett Sackett of Hudson, Ryan Turner of North Hudson, Chris Wilkie of North Hudson, and Christian Wilkie of North Hudson. Um, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to get down there and look at the, um, shelter, but it is a nice addition to Summers Landing Park, and the ser- their service to the community will allow residents to enjoy the park even more, and we really appreciate you doing it. It saved the village a lot of money, and also you got it up really fast. And, um, one of the Boy Scouts, Noah Cast, is planning on do- painting that as his Eagle Scout project, so that'll be taken care of soon, too.
Wondering.
So, thank you, we appreciate you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you. I went by there and did an outstanding job, so, you know, must've been some contractors involved in that or whatever, but it's, uh, very, very well done.
Actually, he's surprised there's no contractors.
Great. Well, even better. Okay.
And actually, I'd also like to thank Daryl for suggesting this as a project to Faith Community, and Mark for, um, helping get it all coordinated and getting the lumber and the cement slab put in and all that. It was a real community effort, and it chose.
Thank you, Gloria, that's it?
Yep.
Okay, Melissa, you got anything from the clerk?
Nothing to me.
There's no elections?
No.
All right. Uh, let's see, item five, Plan Commission Chair update. I don't see...
There was no Plan Commission.
Michael, there was no Plan Commission. Um, now, I think, I see Buck Maylick out in the audience, and, uh, rather than, you know, keep him this evening, I wanna change the order of the, uh, of the, uh, uh, agenda. We go back to, it'd be an item 10, number B. There's a proposed fishing platform and parking area on Lake Mowl, the approval is requested, and I think Buck is here to tell us a little bit about the project. I think everybody's kinda looked at it in the packets, but, uh, Buck, uh...
I'll answer any questions you have, Mr. President. Otherwise, um, when we submit the application from the county, we'd like to have a letter from the clerk or somebody that supports that application. The, the village, of course, is one of the four owners of that property on which the proposed platform would be located, and the county will be happy to take the lead on this little grant request, uh, but it would be nice if all of the owners indicate that they're on board.
The biggest question I had, I, you know, I, as we've, you know, with emails, I've used that area, the fish the lake and stuff for all of my 50-plus years, and I'm just, you know, the, is there money in this grant or agenda thing for the road around there? I mean, that road is in pretty tough condition. I was just kinda curious as to, you know, once you drop off of North Street or wherever it is there, that, uh, I just, you know...
Well, I think it's hard to tell right now. Um, we'll be graveling that propos- that little muddy area, uh, so it's usable as a parking lot if there's sufficient, and we'll probably need to gravel the approach to the fishing platform. Uh, for those of you who remember the picture in your packet, that was taken from the road that the president just described, and in between the road and the proposed area for the fishing platform is, um, a bank of poison ivy and, and, um, some rough ground under it, so we'll have to kinda smooth that out and probably place some gravel on it, uh, to make it readily accessible. Uh, so a lot depends on what we find actually there when we get there, uh, Mr. President, but we'll keep that in mind that you'd like to have the road improved, too.
Well, I mean, it's just something, I do, I mean, 'cause, you know, that's the first thing people are gonna complain about, is, you know, like, this is a great, great spot, but how are we getting in there without knocking the springs out of, or shocks out of a vehicle? But, uh, you know, and, and then, you know, and, and I'm thinking about our squads, too, because, you know, with that additional, uh, recreational facilities, there's also, you know, the need for always, uh, having a patrol down that way, but, uh... Any of the other board members have any questions or, uh, concerns with this or opportunity? And I look forward to the, the fishing cribs, I thought was really interesting part of it, you know, that's a, you know, the fish are very elusive in the winter down there, so, I mean, that could help concentrate and make it a little easier for folks to... Okay, uh, so, uh, I think with the recommendations, we need a, a motion to, uh, send a letter?
There's a state, an issue statement.
I'll move to approve the fish crib, fishing platform and parking area project as presented.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Colleen, thank you, Mark. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We will get you a letter.
Thank you, all.
Thanks, Buck.
Have a good evening. Okay. Six, personnel and finance committee met this evening for the full hour, and, uh, first item on the agenda is claims approval requested.
Can I move to approve the August 2013 non-recurring claims totaling $38,274.67?
Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Thank you, Daryl. Any further discussion? Like I say, I'm glad this number is back down from what it was last month, but, uh, hearing no further discussion, roll call vote. Colleen, would you like to start?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you, area one. Item number two, Local Government Property Insurance Fund, LGPI, considerations of increasing deductible approval requested. Gloria, you're familiar with this, could you just...
Mr. President, I move to change the Local Government Property Insurance Fund's deductible from $500 to $1,000, respective first of January 2014.
Second.
Thank you, Daryl, thank you, Mark. Gloria, any recap, we're good. Any further discussion? It's, uh, recurring claims, Ted?
Yes.
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 Performance evaluations, review, forms, procedures, approval requested. Uh, part of the, uh, tasks that we have, you know, is to, we have employees and we are, uh, set a, set a criteria to, uh, evaluate said employees for raises and/or other considerations, and, uh, the Finance Committee recommended approval of the review forms. We have a motion, a second?
Can I move, Stan, can I move to approve the, uh, performance evaluation review forms and procedures as presented at Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Thank you, Daryl. Further discussion? Hearing none, uh, policy, do I need roll call or we just go?
You don't need a roll call on this.
No, don't need a roll call, so, all in favor of the approval of the procedures? Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Carrier.
I would just like to add that you will be seeing the last, um, evaluation form come forward next month.
Thank you. Gloria. Okay. Uh, next item from Finance was the addendum to collective bargaining agreement regarding vacation comp time accrual. Approval requested. We have a motion from Finance.
We had a motion from Finance, Stan, to approve that, and I'll reiterate that, I'd like to move, uh, move to approve the addendum to the collective bargaining agreement regarding vacation and comp time accrual.
Thank you, Mark. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ted. Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, let's see, that's also all in favor of, uh...
Aye.
Approving, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, merchant services credit card agreement for processing property taxes and other type of payments, approval requested. This is so that our citizens will have the opportunity to pay their property taxes by credit card.
Mr. President, I move to approve proceeding with the setup with point-and-pay product to accept convenience payments, and furthermore, to authorize the village administrator to enter into the agreement.
Second.
Thank you, Daryl, thank you, Mark. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, let's see, that's a spending kinda thing, or is it a spending?
It's not necessary, you can just do...
Not necessary, all in favor of the, approving the agreement with merchant services, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Uh, review of the 2013 budget, projected year-end discussion only.
Basically, I've already given it with my administrator's report, just asking everyone to please take those reports with them and review them, and if they've got any questions to, to, please don't hesitate to come in, and we can sit down and talk about them.
And we will be at a meeting later this month to commence that process. Okay. Item number seven, Public Works Committee, the Public Works had stuff this month, Daryl.
We did have some things. And we had three action items that were recommended to Finance. Finance is recommending them to the full village board, so, Mr. President, I'll proceed with them in that order. First is the Shapiards Project. As you recall, we did have some discussion concerning easements, but as I talked to both Kevin and, uh, to, to Terry, uh, between our two meetings, uh, those details can be worked out, so I really think that's kind of background chatter, and we won't bring that up unless anybody needs to. What we really need to do is recognize that the bid process has been completed. The bids were very, uh, very favorable. Um, the bids came in, as a matter of fact, under the estimates for the project, and it's important to proceed with this project. It's, uh, not going to be able to be bid any more favorably than what we've got right now, so, Mr. President, I move that, uh, we award the, the bid to total excavating of River Falls in an amount not to exceed, not to exceed $360,000, taking into consideration adjustments as necessary.
Thank you, Daryl, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Further discussion? Terry, what did you have to do?
I, no comments really, it's exactly what Daryl said.
Okay. And no further discussion, need a roll call, Ted?
Yes.
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 Okay. Here's unanimous, okay. Uh, okay, and see, Daryl is the sidewalk.
Uh, yes, as I indicated at Finance, this is a situation that has come to our attention several times over the past couple of years. We've resolved the fact that, if this is village responsibility, so I would affirm the action of Public Works and the action of Finance, and, uh, Mr. President, I would move to, uh, contract with Level Right Concrete Lifting LLC to raise the sidewalk at a cost of $445, and to contract with Zappa Brothers Inc. to grade the boulevard so that water will flow from the street into the new catch basin for a cost of $5280. This makes the total project $5725.
A second.
Thank you, Ted. Uh, further discussion? You know, this project is, or this issue's been out there for a while, it'd be nice to get it resolved, and especially with, uh, our seasonal changes, there's a lot more issues there, safety-wise and stuff, in the wintertime, so, uh, it'd be nice to get that project completed, and that's a spending, so, Colleen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
And the last item, Daryl, would you like to...
And the third item, um, that we dealt with, and also approved at Public Works, approved at Finance, and, uh, recommend here to the full village board as we take care of the problems that we've got with the HVAC system here at, uh, the Village Hall. This has been a problem, uh, as the employees could certainly attest, ever since the building, uh, was built, um, and we do have money in the capital improvement fund, so, Mr. President, I would move to have River Falls Heating replace the existing heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system at the North Hudson Village Hall with the system indicated on their bid proposal at a cost not to exceed $23,000, with the money coming from the capital fund.
Thank you, Daryl. Mark, was there a second? Okay, any further discussion? Just for the sake of the discussion, and Mark, this, you had several bids on this, correct, or, or the interest and stuff like that, okay, just so the folks are aware that we're just not sending these to our locals, uh, friends. Okay, so, that is, uh, also a spending, so, I think we're back, Ted, would you like to start?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, item eight, about safety. Mark?
We met in August, our only action item is, uh, approval requested as, and Finance recommended this item, the sale of mobile data computers, which, just the laptops we have, but with the, um, XP becoming obsolete, that's the only thing we have to look into, changing those out, and so we'd like to be able to sell them, and that's what we're asking for approval of, and I would like to make the motion to approve the sale of the mobile data, data computers.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Uh, any further discussion?
I'm just looking at myself.
I believe, uh, Mark said he's already, or the chief has, uh, possible wire for these, so, uh, and it's, since it's a for-sale thing, we'll go, uh, Colleen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And, let's see, number nine, Public Welfare Committee recommendations, uh, Colleen?
No.
Ted?
Sorry.
It's okay, Mr. President, it's understandable. Mr. President, we did meet, uh, this month, and we have two motions to, uh, bring to the board. The first is to move to approve the applications of Lon Fia, Rick Kraus, Kevin Coffey, Sean Coffey, Bradley Cutler, Robert Meyer, Michael Coffey, Michael Coffey Jr., Matthew Kraft, and Harvey Grade for participation in the Village of North Hudson Deer Management Program during the 2013, 2014 hunting season.
Second.
Thank you, Ted. Thank you, Colleen. Uh, further discussion? I believe this is like, this is a continuance of the program we've had in place for the last several years?
Correct, and, uh, discussions with the DNR says it's going wonderful, so, there's been no complaints.
Very good. And, let's see, that was the next one?
It's a contract, though, so I don't know if we have to...
So are you proving the hunters with this, uh, motion, or the contract?
Both.
It's both.
Both. Yes.
'Cause we have them listed too separately, so I just wanted to clarify that you're also approving the 2013...
It's okay.
Correct. So you're making both motions?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yes.
And Colleen had the second, so...
Of both motions, yeah.
Of both motions.
And this is a contract, so...
And they're just, they're two motions, but you've made them into one, so we'll vote once, right, Ted?
Sure.
You seconded that.
Sooner or later, we will.
Okay, contract, Ted?
Yes.
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 And, item D.
Mr. President, uh, there was a motion to the Finance Committee that failed. Uh, it was a motion to recommend giving the present animal warden 30 days' notice of termination of the animal control contract and authorizing the administrator to put out a RFP. Um, the motion was then reconsidered to, uh, be amended to recommend to the board that the, uh, prior to the 30-day notice termination, that the RFP, uh, be put out for consideration. So the motion to the board is, uh, to put a request for proposal out for the animal control or the animal warden contract.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, further discussion? Just for, you know, we've had some issues and complaints, so there, that is the reason we've discussed, uh, uh, replacing the current, uh, animal warden, and so there will be postings for, you know, anybody that is interested or starting a new career, or, uh, that would like to, uh...
It's qualified to do it, too.
Yeah, and there's qualifications to do that, and you do have a year to, uh, get those, uh, qualifications or the state, uh, approvals, so, uh, this is an FYI, but, uh, that, uh, takes care of, and that's for the RFP, did all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and opposed? Motion carries. Uh, let's see, I guess we could've stayed park board late, I mean, but, Colleen, have you got anything else other than the fishing platforms?
No, um, actually, um, just one thing, we are still working on getting the sign placement for the Welcome to North Hudson, and, um, we'll be sending a letter to the, um, property owners of 2166 North, see if they would agree to let us put the prop, the sign on their property, and Mark, uh, Zappa has, said we could put it at the other end on his property and avoid the issue of the state right away.
Well, thank you for the work you've done on that, that has been, and Mark, I mean, everybody's been involved in that.
I haven't done any work, Stan.
No, I'm talking to Mr. Eckblad. And we have enough, we have, well, I mean, they say...
Wow, Mark.
We've got, uh, we've got different, well, you, you agreed to the, uh, you know, just giving up part of your property for these signs and...
Colleen drives a hard bargain. But I understand it's gonna, the flashing arrow pointing to muds and such?
Or fireworks.
That was the contingent?
You do what you gotta do.
I don't think you can hook power up to that. Okay.
That's really all that I have.
That's all you got? Okay.
You're already at the shelter and...
No. Item 11, the board may convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85.
Stan, can I move to convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, R and G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the village who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the village with respect to litigation involving a raise order on 712 Pine Street North?
Second.
Okay, so, it's...
Need a roll call.
Roll call for...
You do need a roll call for that, um, and I, can I make one comment as part of the discussion before you actually vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was a, a court hearing today, and so, um, that's all public, and I would update you on that, uh, you know, whether we go into closed session or not, um, it's up to you guys, uh, and if you have any questions that, that concerning the strategy going forward, that's fine, but if you just want the update on the court hearing, we probably don't need to go into closed session, I would just throw that out there.
I, I think there's some reasons to go into closed session.
Good.
Yeah, I agree. So, uh.
And we need a vote.
And we need to vote, but I'll just make one comment, I, I think, uh, I, uh, I don't, there's nothing, the only thing on the agenda will be we will reconvene, so if you would like to stick around for that, uh, that's, would be the last item is, is reconvening, so, uh, Terry, I'm sure, huh? We will, uh, update you as, uh, as we can, because I know you're an interested party. So, uh, a roll call vote to go into closed session, Ted?
Yes.
Yes.
We, we can only update as far as, as far as closed session material. Okay, I just want.
Well, whatever's on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, okay. But there won't be any, okay.
Okay, so Ted said yes, Daryl?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we are now in closed session. Thank you, everyone.